Pleased to be here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
That's great. Father, thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. God, thank you for this opportunity to come together again and meet about the business of the Huntsville School District. And God, I just pray that you be with us tonight as we meet, as we make decisions. And God, I pray that all the decisions we make would be honoring to you and be what's best for the students of this district. And God, I just thank you for your love, and most of all, thank you for your son, Jesus. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The call to order the Huntsville School District Board meeting on September 3rd, 2024. Do you have a call?
Thank you all for coming. We're starting a wonderful school year. You know, we've certainly been working today on things that still can be maybe tweaked a little bit better or improved upon, but all in all, it's been a great start to the year. I've been very impressed with our students and staff, and of course, the adjustment to four-day, I have a lot of people asking me about that, is going on every day, and we are learning every day how to operate within this system. But I do think every day we get the hang of it a little bit better, and I'm very encouraged by what we've seen. Would also, before we get too far, I'd like to personally just thank the mayor and Chief Police Thomas for working with us on the traffic. We met today, and there's still some things to work out. You know, if you've been here at the school, the traffic is, there's a lot of cars, and there's a lot of buses, and we're working through it the best we can. We've got some ideas to maybe tweak it a little bit more, and we do appreciate all the support that you've given us. You've had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda. I would like to correct one thing on the consent agenda. I made a typo error on it, and item C, approval of the minutes from 7:24 needs to be 8:08. So if you will correct that. And then on the enrollment report, the enrollment report continues to be a little bit all over the place. You know, we reported back in July that we were down close to 100 students. Then, first day of school, we did have a lot of students come in, but typically when students come in, they get enrolled, but your drop, your students that don't show up stay on your roll for 10 days. And until you get through that 10 days, you don't actually know who's off and who's not. You might actually have a really good idea, but until the parents come in and do the paperwork, you don't know for sure. So we have to ride through those 10 days, and our numbers were up, just about to where we were last year, and since then, the 10-day drops have come back in, and most of those are caught up at this point. And I think this afternoon, as best we could tell, we are probably down about 30 to 35 students from where we were last year. Anytime you're down one, it concerns you. So we are a little concerned with that. St. Paul numbers are up, but the students, the numbers here in Huntsville are down just a little bit, and you know, most of everything I've heard about the four-day week's been tossed in from parents. So I don't necessarily attribute it to that. I don't know exactly what it is. I know in Jennifer's Building, they're busting at the seams, and those are the young ones, and they're the ones that stay with them the longest, so that's a good thing. But just to tell you on the enrollment, the enrollment does look like it's about 35 students down right now. The financial report, we are tracking about where we think we would be at this point. We are going to come with the budget due tonight for approval. We are still working through the budget and working through, well, not necessarily the budget, but through our expenditure side of it. Worked with the principals this past week about their expenditures and where they are. Next week, we will work more in our departments, and we'll be all right there. We are, I am going to change a couple of things in how we do it, just to track it, I believe, a little bit better. Tana and I've spent a lot of time talking about that, and that is just how we see it. But all along, we feel the financial report's very strong. So I would recommend that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, let's see, all there.
Thank you. All right. Administration reports. We'll just start work around the room. Tanya, you look like you're first, so I'll let you have it first.
I don't have anything new to say, other than we just, we're enrolling lots of specialized students right now with student services, and we have all of our positions filled teacher-wise, so I'm very pleased with that. Very good.
Natasha.
We're working on the final details of all the different budgets in the federal and state categorical, and lots of testing, as Tanya said, lots of testing for this time of year.
So this week at Watson Primary, it's a very busy week. One of our staff members said we're on day 11, and it feels like we're on kindergarten 11. It's just rolling. Like Mr. Law said, I feel like, shockingly, our kindergarteners have adjusted very well to a little bit longer day, so I've been very proud of them. This Friday, we'll celebrate Grandparents' Day. Our second grade will host their grandparents in for that, and then the dreaded day has come, and we're going to hit our Atlas screener. Our kindergarten's going to rip the Band-Aid off Thursday and Friday. We're very thankful that our April selves made a decision to do the test pilot in May, even in the crazy time of year, because now they know what to expect. And so they'll do that starting on Thursday and Friday, and then finish up the next week, and then the different grade levels will hit between now and the end of September. So we won't have any results of that till sometime in October, and so it's just a learning year for us, and you know, we hope that we get some useful data to drive some instruction, but we just don't know. But very busy times.
So same thing, Grandparents' Day Friday, and we're hosting, our third grade is hosting, so we have that all organized and set up, and then we're doing our third-grade Atlas screener tomorrow. So let's see how it goes.
Benny?
Yeah. At the middle school, we've been doing a lot of work with building relationships and doing positive behavior incentive stuff. Our students are starting to get to choose a club this Friday, and we're excited about that. We've been teaching our behavior expectations and our matrix, and you may have seen one of the videos on Facebook of what the teachers showed, how to pull up all the way in the car line, and so we're having fun with that and building lots of relationships. Kids are doing team challenges and things like that. Our outdoor ed classes have been catching some big fish, so that's been fun. Some of our PE classes have been getting to go to Midtuson Park to play frisbee golf, and our East class has some guest speakers coming in next week, so just lots of fun things they're already getting started with. With academics, we've been busy doing pre-diagnostic assessments, like IXL pre-assessments for math. They've been doing the STAR test and the oral reading fluency test for reading, just to try to make sure that we know where kids are so that we can grow them like we need to be. Also, I, as you know, I'm moving, so I got to walk around in some of the classrooms this past week, and I was just very impressed and encouraged with what I saw. The teachers are doing amazing things. Lots of group work, lots of student collaboration, student discussion. Kids were out of their seats working, you know, which is great. We don't want them to sit at desks all day long. Just they had engagement labs, and so there's just a lot of great things happening, so it's exciting.
Ruth?
Kind of like Jim we said, it's going by fast, but at the same time, you know, it's kind of exhausting. But we're figuring out this four-day week, and we're still making some adjustments to our schedule time as well, and grade checks and things like that, but we'll get it all figured out. A lot of things going on. As you said, our Atlas screener for our K-3 kids started this week, will carry over in the next week. Our Grandparents' Day is next Tuesday, the 10th, at our school, and then, of course, we got Pioneer Days next Friday and Saturday. If you're not busy, come down. The Miss St. Paul Pageant will be next Thursday night, and the winner will be announced on Friday night, I believe that's correct. Is that right, Natalie?
Yep.
Okay. We're going to do a blood drive on our campus on the 18th, something that Ms. Savannah Smith, our ag teacher, wanted to put together, and so we haven't done it in a while, and so we're just kind of excited to get that going. We had our first Genius Hour this past Friday, where our kids signed up for Genius Hour activities. That rolled over really well. Lots of good things going on at school. I've been polling the kids about our school culture and climate, and what do they think about school, and the overwhelming positive response that I will share with the board when it's our time to present, and we'll share that data with the board and send that out. So lots of good things going on. We will meet with Fed Strategies for the first time, or Fed puts strategies this Thursday day, so it's our first time meeting with them. Lots of things going on. We're open.
David?
Things are going well. Just like everybody, we've got a lot going on. Football, Seventh and Ed Craig's playing over there right now. Volleyball and golf are both in Berryville tonight. Volleyball's at home Thursday. We don't have a varsity football game this week, it's our open week, so we get catch a little bit of a break there, but then on Saturday, we host the Huntsville Invitational Volleyball Tournament, so we'll have games going at the Activity Center and the Berry Gym, so that's going to be a busy day with a lot of teams coming in to play. So a lot going on, but I just briefly, I'm not going to mention specifically because I'll forget somebody, and that's going to mess me up, but we have had so many town people and businesses that have donated food and different projects to the athletic department, and I'm not surprised anymore about what Huntsville does for our students and for our athletes, but I always want to make sure that I share with you guys how grateful I am for the town and for the businesses here that take care of us, and they've done a great job so far this year, and I just wanted to say that publicly, so thank them. Thank you and everyone who's up there.
Jim?
All right. I've been processing applications, it's been super crazy, but it looks like right now we're sitting at 66.47%, that's what we're at this morning. Still got more apps to process, so those aren't the final numbers yet.
Well, farther was this than last year. That's a plus. Good. Anything with maintenance custodial going on there?
Just making adjustments to the new four-year, or four-day, no, four-day, four-day of heat schedule. It's a bit different with snacks and everything. We're working on some procedures to kind of help with taking care of trash, snack trash, and trying to help keep our bug infestation down as much as possible. So that's pretty much been the big thing on our radar the past couple of weeks.
Manny?
It's going good. I don't have anything new worth really sharing, and I appreciate the guys that's working for me. We're off to a good start, working strong.
The only thing I have is the academic report, so I'll say that. We'll get to it. I do have a couple of things I'd like to report to you. Number one, you land out on Highway 23 that you all agreed to sell a few months ago, we're still working on that. The paperwork has the wrong school district number involved with it. Mr. Allred has had it now for a couple of months, and they are still on the seller's end trying to work the paperwork out. I tried to call the seller three times today myself, or the buyer, I'm sorry, three times today myself, to expedite that. As far as I know, we're still moving forward with it, but until they get the paperwork worked out on their end, we are in a whole league battle. So that is where we're at. The property on Kane Street is now ours. We finalized that deal last week. I am excited about that. People have vacated the premises, and so it is ours, and we will, I really hope we can move forward very quickly on getting that thing brought down. I do not like having an abandoned house sitting right off our campus. I don't like that for who could be in it. I don't like it for our kids coming and going, and the safety concerns with that. So I certainly hope we can move forward in a very timely fashion on turning that into at least a smooth piece of property, if not something that suits the district more. Baseball and softball update, we've got some more to talk about that tonight, but we have had multiple meetings with the baseball and softball group again, and we do believe everything's in place now to move forward. The next step we are going to talk about when we do the new business, when we move down, so we have really gone as far as we can up until this point with the people that are on our team, and so we need to expand our team. School-based health clinic, Matt, I'm going to flip that over to you.
Yeah, we met with Boston Mountain. We have been approved for the grant, you guys knew that, but just a little bit of info about that. The first year, we'll get $150,000, second year, $105,000, and the third year, $75,000. So the idea is to, they're going to fund us enough to get it to a point where it's sustainable, where it's self-sustaining, which Boston Mountain's done this multiple times, and they're experts with it, so we're kind of following their lead on a lot of it. But one of the big things is the site that we're using, you know, we're going to have to renovate that site, so we met and talked about that the other day, and they came up with a little bit different site plan, which is actually beneficial to us, I feel like, and Blaine can agree with that or disagree. I think it's more beneficial for us, it's going to be more cost-efficient for us. And you know, they eliminated a bathroom, which obviously eliminates some plumbing for us and some work, and tried to get everything on an exterior wall so that we don't have to sock up the floors and things like that. But Blaine's been working hard on trying to get everything approved through the city and getting all the right, all the right permits that we need to get, and taking care of all of that for us, and we're hoping to have the renovations done. Blaine's going to slap me when I say this, but by the end of December, so. But it'll be a challenge, but we're going to try to have it done by the end of December, and it's probably going to cost a little more than what we budgeted for that first year. Like I said, we have $150,000 built in, but that includes exam beds and lots of other items in there, so on the renovations, we'll probably go over budget, but we're hoping to recoup some of that in year two, in year three.
All right. The only thing I would add to that is I do, our people are very busy, and they're busy, and if they're not busy, we're overstacked, so they're very busy. And I do worry about Blaine's team having enough time to get that in by December. I'm a little afraid of what they might have to take away from other areas to pull their people off to do that, and so I'm going to personally, in my head, leave a few options open of other ways that we might, if we have to, be able to look at those renovations, because we are in a crunch on time to have that done by December, and I do worry about that a little bit. I also worry about the fact, you know, Matt and I've spent a lot of time talking about this, I worry about the fact that we are going to have to cash flow that building in the short term. It is going to cost more in year one than we are going to draw in year one. Now, we do think in year two and three, we are going to catch back up, but we've still got to cash flow that, and so that does concern me a little bit. We did receive from the Department of Facilities Today report, the downside of the report is you all turned in a facilities master plan last year. In that facilities master plan, you asked for a new roof at the middle school, and I will give you the bad news first, that was declined, and then I'll tell you why in just a second. The other projects that we asked for were a roof at St. Paul and a new high school. All this was done, all this was done in the master plan. The reason we were turned down on the roof, I believe, is because our plan, in our master plan, is to build a new high school, move the high school to the new high school, and then move the middle school kids over. And so I think that they had some questions as to why would we put a new roof on this facility, and there are some structural issues we noticed with the middle school, so I don't think that necessarily takes us out of the game for the middle school, but I think it probably does back the game up a little bit more to do some more extensive renovations at the middle school. The upside of that is, without a doubt, in dollars, the greatest expense will be a new high school, and this is just another step up the ladder. The next steps now for the two projects that were approved is when the legislative session starts in winter or in spring, they will meet and they will determine whether or not they're going to fund projects, which I would assume they will say they're going to fund projects. The devil's always in the details of how much money they put over into that. After they allocate their money, then of how much money they put over into that. After they allocate their money, then in May, the Department of Facilities will then take that dollar amount and begin to fill as many needs as they can. And so we have climbed another rung on the ladder, but we still have a couple of more rungs to clear. But any way you look at it, we do have two or three pretty sizable construction projects and renovations coming over the next short term. Anybody have any questions on any, any of those reports? All right. Matt, if you would, then, if you could take us into the academic report?
Well, these principals stole my thunder a little bit, but I appreciate that, honestly. They, so they talked a little bit about the K-three screener. I met with our instructional facilitators the other day, and I just, most of them, I didn't meet with high school because Acadians is what we were talking about and the K-three screener, and it didn't really affect high school. But I just got to brag on them because there was one point where I just kind of sat back in the meeting and just listened to them because they're experts in their area and they do a great job. And I'm just very thankful to be a part of the team when they're around. But, but we were talking about the K-three screener because it'll come with Teslets, which are supposed to progress monitor our students. And we already use Acadians, which does that, and it does a deep dive into the skill that that kid is missing. And, and so we don't know a whole lot about these Teslets yet. And so our talk was, do we just use the Teslets, or do we just use the Acadians, or are we using both? And, and so we come to the conclusion that we're going to have to use both for a while, which is more work for our teachers, more work for the instructional facilitators. But if we really want to do what's right for our kids, we have to do both and make sure that we're identifying those skill gaps. But just props to them for doing a great job working through that. So the other thing that I wanted to bring up is the fair. I got this sheet. This was the report from the fair of all the kids and everything that they won. So I'm not going to read all of those, but I did ask our Agri teachers to just send me some highlights of, of kids that did well at the fair. And so I'll start with St. Paul. Lolly Montez, she won grand champion and breed champion with her chickens alongside, along with ten blue ribbons for her chickens, quail, and pigeons. Tayla Hawkins won first in her class with her pig and cow, third with her cow in, in her class. Remington Hawkins won first in his class with his cow, second with his pig, and he entered a dog carrying box that he made in the ag shop that earned a grand champion and best of show. And then Cinder Strout won homegrown champion with her hundred-pound pig. So great job, St. Paul kids. And I would, I'm going to stop for just a second and say, I was up there, Brian and I were up there, and Savannah was running like crazy trying to make sure everything was done. And, and then our Huntsville boys, they were sitting in lawn chairs. But no, I'm giving them a hard time. We gave them a hard time. But, but they did, they all did a lot of hard work to get those kids where they needed to be. They did a great job. But Huntsville, we had Kelsey Skates, fourth overall market steer, Jade Emmett, third overall market steer, senior market steer showmanship, senior breeding lamb showmanship, Kyson Skates, which I believe this was first time for Kyson Skates. He was fourth overall commercial heifer. Valley Yancy, grand champion market goat, sixth overall market goat, grand champion market lamb, fourth overall market lamb, grand champion breeding ewe, senior market goat showmanship. And then Ashlyn Davis, ninth overall market goat, fifth overall market lamb, Kylie McLeod, grand champion dairy heifer, senior dairy cattle showmanship, Cor Jackson, senior market swine showmanship, Blake Canyon, senior breeding swine showmanship, Bella Meyer, senior rabbit showmanship. And then Kay Jackson won outstanding youth for twenty twenty-four, and Valley Yancy was the High Point livestock exhibitor. So great job to those kids. Give them a round of applause. And I, you know, I got to thinking about this academic report, and this is academic. They, I mean, this is academic. These kids are learning a lot about livestock and about taking care of animals, growing your own, and
Responsibility.
Yes. And, and that's what runs our community for the most part, you know. And so I, I think that's just as important as, as some of the other things that we talk about. I know intermediate kids all got a chance to go up there. There were other schools that took some groups up there. And I just thought it was great to see our kids get a chance to be involved with that. So.
That's great. I'd agree completely. And, you know, we, we, you know, you have your sports teams, and lots of people go to the ballgames, and you have all that. But kids need to be involved with things, you know? They need activities. They need responsibilities. They need, they need to be involved. And it was great to see these kids. They, they worked so hard, and, and they, they put so much effort into it. You wish everybody could get a blue ribbon, but they can't, you know? But I was very proud of them, very proud of the work they put in. And, you know, a great day for us to get to go up and celebrate our kids. All right. Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
All right, head to new business, if you would. First item is not actually in your tab. You, the blue book that you have in front of you?
Due to professional conflicts, I'm going to recuse myself for this vote.
All right. All right. You'll step out? All right. We are, we are at the point now with the baseball and softball building for sure. Even with the planning of how the new high school would look, if you look at that land, we have forty-four point something acres now. That land does miss. All right? So, so that always creates concern about how buildable some of that land is. We do have a group that is, that has raised the funds to build a baseball and softball building, and they've worked very hard on that. I'm very excited for, for our students that will get to, get to participate in that and use that. But that building also has to fit in to the big picture of everything we're wanting to do with the high school. So my plan is, is to move forward with sole borings, where we, I believe it's sixteen holes we will drill within that piece of property. And what they're basically looking for is the best quality ground to build the structures on. You know, we might like this to be here and this to be there, but ultimately, we've got to put it where we can build it the most efficiently for us. And so we are at that point, and we, we are going to move forward with that. In the process of that, the building has reached the point that we cannot move forward without a construction manager. We can't take another step without knowing exactly what the costs on this building are going to be. We have estimated costs, but we do not have cost yet. I have had the, had the opportunity to work with various construction companies, but without a doubt, I have found a relationship with, with KenCo to be the best one that I've had. We, we've worked with them in Farmington, and they did a, they did an excellent job. I would, I would never bring a group to you that I didn't think was the best. I might like one group better than another or whatever. I'm going to bring the best, who I believe the best group is. And I believe KenCo Constructors are the best, the ones I've worked at. You have an RFQ that you've had an opportunity to look at. Tyson, could I introduce you?
Yes.
Tyson Reimer from KenCo. I will let you introduce the other two people that are with you. Tell us a little bit about KenCo Constructors.
My name is Tyson Reimer. I'm a vice president of our KenCo Constructors Office in Northwest Arkansas. We're excited about the opportunity to be here. We feel like we've got a lot of, a lot of experience in the K through twelve realm. We've done a lot of baseball projects. We've done the high-end stuff, well, with the Razorback baseball indoor track and training facility there, where they get indoor, indoor baseball practice. We've also done a lot at Palm Stadium. We've done their new performance center. So done a lot there. But we've also done stuff a lot smaller scale. The Farmington was a nice complex that we've done. So we feel like we've got a good, good handle on that market, along with the schools that we've done, in order to bring some, some value to you guys as far as budgets, like what Brian's talking about through this process.
Take a quick one.
Yeah, it's been, guys.
Yep.
So I got Tim Pirtle and Richard Stewart. I'll let them kind of introduce themselves.
I'm Tim Pirtle. I'm the director of pre-construction at KenCo. Work on the front end, trying to help the design and push towards being economical as well.
I'm Richard Stewart. I'm kind of in charge of where the water hits the wheelie, I'd say. As the construction starts, I'll be in charge of scheduling all subcontractors, materials, schedule the workers, and safety, which is a big part of what our company does, not only for our workers, but for everybody around, students.
You guys have had an opportunity to look at the information for the baseball and softball complex. I don't want to put you on the spot too much, but you know what our dollars are, and you know where we're at? Are we in the ballgame?
I think we're in the ballgame. And it's going to be really tight all the way down at the end. But, you know, Tim, we've all three looked at it Friday. We looked at it today through those drawings and kind of come up with some ideas and how to, ways to save some money, to cut some money if we need to in order to stay within that, that budget allowance. So we've, we've looked pretty closely at it. We're ready to take the next step and put some, I guess, pencil and paper, put some budgets together and make sure that we're, we're hitting our, hitting the target. So.
Anybody have any questions? Well, we've got the team at KenCo here that you'd like to ask or?
I want to say one more thing.
Please do.
So yeah, Tim is our pre-construction guy. Richard is superintendent. Right now, we've got Richard doing some little jobs in, in little jobs. We don't have a big job lined up for him. We would classify this indoor baseball and softball complex a big job for us. So he is readily available to do that work. Tim's available to, to start doing budgets on it tomorrow if we get approval.
My goal would be to get started as quickly as possible and try to have this in place for next school year. Obviously, we'll have to pedal quickly to meet that. But that is, that is where I see us. This, this according to the baseball and softball people, it's been something that we've talked about for a long time. And they're, I think they're anxious to move forward, and I think this is the next step in the process. Anything you want to add? Any other questions you all have?
I'm with you on them. I've worked on jobs where these guys were running the job. So I'm, I'm all in on, on them doing the project. Very smoothly run project.
All right. My recommendation is to, to move forward with KenCo Constructors as our construction manager. All right. Thank you. Thank you all.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Brian. Whoa. I'm kind of jumping off topic, but I've just got to thinking about construction, and the Activity Center seating is going in next week. I just, the new seating is going in next week.
We are excited about that, too. All right. Thank you all. I'll be in touch with you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. More time.
All right. Item B in our new business is approval of athletic trainer's position. We've kind of talked about this a little bit before, David. Quickly, would you want to hit on this in any way? This is a replacement of a position.
Sure.
The salary is consistent with what we have done in the past.
Right.
This is a local person we're using. What would you like to add to that?
Just that there's an athletic trainer shortage in Northwest Arkansas and across the state. And we used to get our trainer from Northwest Health. They don't have anyone to send. We talked to UAMS. They don't have anyone to send, so we had to go outside the box a little bit and look at different options because we need somebody there. It's just too big of a job for coaches to have to deal with that and injuries and things. And we talked to Kristen Clark, who's in this area, involved with the athletic program already. She's taking classes in some orthopedics for her specialty. They'll actually help. I talked to the AAA to make sure this is well within their guidelines because she's not, quote, an athletic trainer. But as a nurse practitioner, she's actually technically more highly qualified. And they were fine with that and said, whatever her scope is, she's capable to do what she needs to do. And after talking to the company she's working for, we were, we threw out a number. They threw one back, and it's well, pretty close to what we were paying previously. You know, last year, we had to increase because Northwest started to back out. And so we're, we're just a little bit above what we paid before, but we're still under the increase we had to deal with last year. So it fits in the middle of what we've been doing.
No, I like, I mean, we're in a better shape now because she does have a medical degree.
Right.
I would tell you, I was a little concerned, David and I talked about this morning. I was a little concerned Friday night. We didn't have anybody at Lamar Friday night. And so it's certainly time to, to make a decision and make a move on this.
I taped an ankle Friday night for the first time in a couple of years.
Poor kid. Poor kid. He's still living. And so then I would, I would recommend that we, that we move forward with the approval of athletic trainer position and hire Kristen Clark for that position. School budget, we're required by state law to pass the school budget before September fifteenth of each, of each school year. You have that in front of you. The revenue for the school for this year, it looks like it's going to be around twenty-three million dollars. The revenue, the revenue side of it, there's not a lot we can do. That's based on our, that's based on our students. That's based on how much the state tells us each student is worth. That's based on a collection rate for our county, based on the assessed valuation. What we can do something about is the expenditure side of it. And we're, we're going to work very hard to make sure that, that we operate, we operate in a, in an efficient fashion. Talking about building a, building a high school, talking about putting roofs on, talking about doing other things. Those things are expensive. And we have, we have to make sure that we're operating as efficiently as we can to do that. We also know, I mean, I don't know, but I feel that, that we could possibly be discussing at some point some, some small millage increase for the high school. I think we have to convince our taxpayers that we are operating as efficiently as we can. And then I think that, that's part of what we're supposed to do with taxpayers' money. So, so you have that budget. You have, you have the breakdown by the source of funds. You have the budget expenditures by, by source. You also have the pre-K budget. That, that budget is a living document. It will, it will change, and it will be tweaked as we go through the year. This is the best estimate that we have as we sit here on, on the third day of September. But, but we do, we do, we do feel very comfortable with where we are budget-wise. We, and, and when we talk about another item down here in just a minute, that can also be a factor in our budget as we move forward. But, but I would like, I would recommend that, I mean, I'd entertain any questions you have about the budget. Yes, sir?
On our, our discussion, on the pre-K?
Yes, sir.
Over, over at home?
Yes, sir. You want to talk about your, your slots?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You are, at St. Paul, you're, you're allotted ten slots in your school district. What's happened this year for the first time ever is you actually had eleven kids sign up. That's the first time we've had more than ten that, that I can find within the last three or four years. It might have happened before, but it would have been back. Unfortunately, one of those slots was taken up by a student that was on the ten-day drop list. And so if all the students now at St. Paul, I do believe have been placed, and they're all in a spot. We are currently, we are currently funding the St. Paul position or pre-K with the St. Paul money that's allocated by the state plus thirteen thousand dollars that we have to take out of the general operating fund to give to St. Paul just to pay for the ten you've got. So if we were to add an eleventh student on a full-time basis, we would have to hire an additional person, which would cost us about twenty thousand dollars plus benefits. And that money would also So if we were to add an 11th student on a full-time basis, we would have to hire an additional person, which would cost us about $20,000 plus benefits. And that money would also have to come out of the big operating.
If you have more, say what a 10 shows up.
10, 10 is all.
We just can't.
10's all, 10's all you get, just like we have, we have a number here, and I believe it's 50, but I'm like...
We have 70 here.
70. And when they fill, when they fill that up in Huntsville, they can't take anymore.
We can turn away all the time up here.
When you hear legislators say, "I'm, I'm for pre-K," that's great. Everybody's for pre-K. What I want to know is, do you fund pre-K? That's the important thing. So to say, "I'm for it," really doesn't mean anything. We need more money for pre-K. We need more money in St. Paul.
Absolutely, because there's no chance to grow.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We need more money. We need additional slots in St. Paul, and we need additional slots in Huntsville.
It's hard having my mother cry because she can't...
Yes, sir. And I'm sorry. Yes, sir. But that, I think we've worked through that about as good as we could, considering.
And the state is very particular with the pre-K money.
Probably some of the college money we give. It's the most disturbing thing I've had to do with the school so far.
I'm sorry you had to deal with it. I am glad it's worked out, frankly.
It has for that one, but if they have more come...
Yeah, if there are more come. That is the budget as we have it. And I would, I would recommend that we approve the budget as presented. Last month, we came through with some purchase service contracts. We actually didn't get this one in time to get it in. This is, this is, and Bonnie, you helped me to mark this is TDT. Is this correct?
Yes, Arissa Health used to be OGC for day therapy.
And so this, this is a person that's going to come in and work with our students on a purchase service contract, or we will send students to them.
We go to them in this case.
But this is another purchase service that needs to be picked up through Arissa Health. Any questions or thoughts to that?
How do we use these?
Yes. It's formerly OGC.
They've changed the name.
Right. It's probably two or three years ago. Nick, all favor.
One of them.
All right. Under tab E, approval of Sonic gift cards. And I'm going to defer to a little help on this. As Jill was talking, she told you that we were at a number of 66.4. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. We need to be at 70. So we are very close. If we are at 70, the dollar amount is?
If we remain at 70 this year, then next year, we will get another increase of $330,000 for ESA funding. So that would be a total increase of 660 over us. Well, not over the last two years. It would be 99%.
So in the, in the process of looking at ways we can get from 66 to 70, you don't always have to reinvent the wheel. Sometimes you just steal really good ideas, you know? And a couple of our neighbors that have been successful have done this through various ways, independent of each one of their districts. Some of them have bought TVs and had raffles. Some of them have bought bicycles and had raffles. Some of them have done various things to encourage participation. There's a team we met, and we just kind of decided we liked the idea of doing a little for everybody rather than a lot for anybody. You know, you could say, "Well, we're going to give away this super TV," but the odds might still be 1 in 2,000 you're going to win it, you know? So we have, we have come up with the idea a little bit, listening to what some of our neighbors that have been successful have done, of purchasing Sonic gift cards. We will do this, we will do this through our operating budget. This will not be federal money in any way. This will come out of our operating budget. We propose to purchase 1,510 Sonic gift cards. And every person that fills out a form or that has a student that is homeless, there are a series of guidelines, and somebody's going to either have to help me with that, or we're just going to have to play, there's a series of guidelines because I don't remember all of them. But there are, there are students of need that, that will be eligible for this, for this gift card. This is a bit unorthodox, you know, but this is a small purchase to help us close that 4% gap, which is worth 100, $300,000 in this year alone to our school district. And we think that it is...
It's a good balance.
Worthy. And so I applaud the thinking outside of the box. Anytime we do anything that raises money at school, that you have to pay something on the front end, it always makes me nervous that we're going to get enough back to offset it. But the risk to reward, the reward to the risk on this is too great. Not take advantage of it. This, this, this is enough money to really make a difference. And what would, what would you all like to add to that? Where have I misspoke or clean me up or whatever?
So I just would like to add that so every student will get the gift card. And so we have students that automatically qualify, as Mr. Law was saying, on the homeless list or migrant who receive SNAP benefits, all of those things. Those are all direct certifications. And so those students will receive them as well. And that, so you have, you only have to have one application for family, but all students will receive an individual $10 gift card.
We certainly hope that this is going to help us close this gap. We feel like it is, and we're excited about it. Nobody else has anything else? Does anybody have any questions? And I, my recommendation would be that we approve the purchase of $15,000 for the Sonic gift cards.
That's a great idea.
All right. Thank you. We do have some personnel to hit on very quickly. We have, we have a list of hires. We have two resignations. We have four transfers in the district. I would, I would recommend that we approve that slate of personnel as it's presented to you for the August 8th personnel list. Okay. We've had requests to read this out. Apparently, y'all have always read it out in the past, and I haven't been doing that. So let me, and the hires are Angela Schaefer, Robert Spittle?
Spittle.
Spittle. Veronica Bean, Michelle Franklin, Kimberly Bollinger, Casey Julich. The resignations are Keith Kluth, Angela McGee. The transfers in the district are Carrie Oaf, Kristy Ledbetter, Kim Jamison, and Angela Schaefer. All right. That'll, that'll close out all our, that part of it. We do have...
You have one more on that next page.
Sarah Hawkins.
Yep.
That's correct. That was a late intended. We do have a group of students. We have about seven or eight students here that will be, that are, that are either coming out or going. Two, looks like we're actually gaining two and losing six of the eight. But we do have this list of student transfers. I would recommend, is that from your front cover there? I would recommend that we approve the student transfer list. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. I'm going to, we are going to move into the next phase. You all that, that want to stay, stay. Those of you that have other commitments or, and let me also say that Mike is not here. Mike Nichols is not here. He's got ballgame duty now, and so he could not be here. It's not that he's not here. He just has ballgame duty. We're going to take just a second and kind of get there, get everything good in place. You all, if you all are going to go, this would be a perfect opportunity. I would, I would like to welcome Dr. Keith Williams. Dr. Williams, I have known for many years. I respect, I respect him highly. He was a teacher when I knew him, and he was such an excellent teacher. I chose to drive to Little Rock on Tuesday nights to take his school finance class after working all day and then having to go to work on Wednesday because he was so knowledgeable in school finance. And so I have a tremendous amount of respect for Dr. Williams. I know he is here to spend a few minutes talking to us about the search committee and the search team from McPherson Jacobs. So Dr. Williams, thank you. Welcome. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you. Thank you.
I forgot the podium. I'd like to mention something. It's a big honor to privilege. Listening to y'all run this board meeting reminds me of a lot of, people on the outside do not understand at all what's happening in the school and how much effort goes forth and is put into getting a school year started or this thing. It reminds me of going to a ballgame and having somebody up in the stands trying to officiate the ballgame that's never read a rulebook. Never read the rulebook, but they want, they want to call the ballgame. That's sort of like people that's blind about code, and they don't know much about it. Okay. Very, very good. It's a privilege to be here tonight. I like to come to board meetings and watch the, what transpires. It makes me envious because I used to do that, but not envious enough to get back into. You get to a point where you know that the game is going faster than you can keep up with, and I'm at that, I'm at that point in my career. We are ready to start moving forward with the search. You, I think the first thing I need to do is we need to plan how we're going to conduct this. I'm going to pass out to you, or let you pass down, search calendars. And this is a draft. I didn't put a draft on it, but I should have. But we're going to talk about this and see if we, did I give you two?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody got one now? Very good. Everybody got one? I want to take a few minutes and go through this, make sure that you're in agreement. If we need to make changes, we can. Let me tell you one thing that I did when I looked at this calendar. I looked at your board meeting schedule, and every time that I meet with you is going to be one of the board meetings. You have enough meetings that you don't need to come to a special meeting for 15 minutes for me to present something to you. But it worked out very well as I developed this calendar just to coincide with your board meetings. So that's one thing. Let's just look at each date, and this will give you a good overview and refresh your memory of what's going to transpire between now and about December the 15th. Look at tonight. Here's what we want to do tonight. We're going to set the calendar. I want to get a calendar that you agree to and we approve. I want to identify the selection criteria. I asked some of you to do some homework if you wanted to, and hopefully you did that. The point of, we're going to have a person called a point of contact. And that point of contact is going to be my, my individual on the ground that's going to help me do some things 200 miles from here, such as gather information about board members' occupation that's going to our home office. That'll be an application, some other things that we need to do here initially to get the, get the search moving and moving very effectively and in a very organized manner. Also, discuss advertising media. And we'll talk about that in just a little bit. Then we're going to talk about identify stakeholder groups and community groups. Let me, let me talk to you a little bit about that, and then I'll add more later on. One of the marks of the way that we conduct a search is to provide stakeholder input. Now, we can't let all 2,200 residents of Huntsville have input, but we can let individuals representing those groups have input in regards to what transpires. Now, I know ultimately the decision rests upon the board, but sometimes when individuals have the opportunity to speak their voice and just at least open and share, and sometimes even vent, it makes the process more open, more transparent. You can take that. You will see it, and then you will allow that to influence you and how you make decisions in regards to who you want to select and who you're going to be accountable for. So whatever happens, you know, ultimately, you're the one that's accountable, so you'll be the one that makes those decisions. But we'll talk about stakeholder groups more in just a minute. Also, we're going to talk about community members that we want to invite to a special community meeting. Plus, it's an open meeting, but we'll talk about that more in just a minute. Okay, advertising a position. We'll talk about that, avenues for advertising. Look over on the second page, October 1. And this is also a board meeting date. If possible, I'd like to work with all your administrators and so forth and have what we call the stakeholder group meetings that day. That means then I could come up and do the, with a consultant that'll be working with me, we'd do those stakeholder group meetings that day. And then that night, after that stakeholder group meeting, I'd give you a 15-minute, 15-minute overview of my day with all these different groups. Then you'll get back what I call an executive summary of what we have gleaned from talking with all of these different individuals that represent your district and the community. But that's on the, on the stakeholder groups, and this is where the point of contact really becomes helpful and beneficial to me, is we recommend at least four stakeholder groups. If you want to change this, you can, but we, we want to have an administrators group, which represents every building and campus in your district. We want to do that. We want to have a classified staff group, which represents both, both communities. Students from both high schools, nine or 10 through 12, representing all students. When we talk about representing, we're talking about not just the ones that are on the student council and play football. We're talking about a diverse group that has representation from all the different types of students that attend your campus, your schools. We want to have a teachers group. Teachers group represents every campus. And we want to have that designed where we have every building represented. And then these individuals hopefully will take and share the results of the meeting, what happened in the meeting, as we meet with them, with their colleagues and lounge talk and things like that. And then that evening at 6 o'clock, we'd like to have an open community meeting. And we would like to give you as board members the opportunity to select individuals, first of all, that you would like to get a special invite to that meeting. And I've got just a form here I'm giving you now. This is homework. When we talk about individuals you would like to send, send a letter to, to invite them to this community meeting, that, that ensures that those individuals will at least know that you're concerned and you want them informed, and hopefully they will, they will attend. But what you will do is you will write down names of individuals that you want to come to that meeting, and you will pass them to the point of contact in your district. And Mr. Law and I have talked about this. And they will receive a letter from our home office, and that letter will look like this. Make you think of Bishop Clinton, great Bible. Fifty-some years, fifty-some years ago. So we will send them a letter from the home office, and that, that letter will go to individuals that you write on that list. And we ask you to help us in this way. If you can, have a valid mailing address for those people. That will help. That will be submitted within the next, I'd like to say about tomorrow, to the point of contact in the district. And then that person will get all of this information, put it on an Excel sheet that will be sent to our home office. And then about a week before October 1, they'll receive this letter from, from, from us saying that we invite them to this community meeting. They're invited. We want them to be an active participant if they choose. We also will publicize this meeting on your website, if there's a weekly newspaper, any way we can get the word out, letting everybody know if they wish to attend, that they're welcome to attend. Now, what we do in that meeting, that community meeting, is we ask them questions that will, probing questions that will get them to respond to us. We want to get a feel of how those people in that, in the community, what their thoughts are about the district, the community, what type of leader... are about the district, the community, what type of leader that they're seeking as a new superintendent, and what are the issues this leader is gonna be facing when they arrive. And we make record of all those things. We also ask the same things from the different focus groups, the teachers, administrators, those people. But that's the way that we organize our focus groups. Now, the question I would ask of you, is there different groups or anything that you would like to change in regards to how we do these focus groups? We'll have one day that we spend all day long meeting with these different groups, hour and a half intervals, however we work it out. Now, I do know that St. Paul, we will have to work out whether we can get those people here, either by zooming them in or however we we're gonna do that. We'll work that out. If we do zoom them in, they will still be an active participant, we'll have given them the opportunity, we'll ask questions of them and give them the opportunity to talk to us, and we'll make record of that as well. But that'll be decided however you want it to, and I'll work with the point of contact on that. Okay? Is there any suggestions or questions you have about the way we do these focus groups that you would like it to to be adapted in any way, we'll be glad to do it?
I think I kinda have the same general, yeah, with the whole with different community members listed as well.
Okay.
And Ms. Timberg did as well, she sent me hers, and it was the same general.
Right.
Those focus groups and then the view.
Yeah, so you'll get you'll each one of you submit a number of names that you want us to send letters to, and we will do that. But we'd like for all six of you and the and this, is it Timberge?
Timberge.
Timberge, okay. We would like for her to also participate and and do that as well. But we will get those those recommendations of names to our point of contact, and then they will take care of communicating with our home office and get that done. Okay, on October 1, that's when we'll be we will be if that's the date that we can work in, we will be here and attend you and come to your board meeting right after that community meeting. What we do is this, and I can't tell you what to do, but we recommend that board members do not attend that community meeting. We want it to be open. If there's somebody there that wants to vent, we wanna let them vent, let them have their piece, their their say about whatever they wanna talk about. But like I said, I've done enough of these over the years that that I'll have control of the meeting, I assure you. There will not be any any type of activity or one person that controls the meeting. We will stifle those people that want to do all the talking and let other people communicate with us in that meeting. Okay, is that okay if we go with with the the focus groups as is?
Yes.
I will work with your point of contact, and probably the high school principal will be the ones that knows the district's schedule to the point if there is a major conflict. Now, I know that we can't get around volleyball games and certain things like that, you're gonna have things going on, but we will do the best we can to avoid if there's any major activity that would make that date impossible, then we would avoid it. Okay? So, okay, we're good on that. Look at November the 5th. Board meeting, November the 5th. We'll have an executive summary of the stakeholder inputs, Wes, sir.
She had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We had heard that maybe members of the central office would be able to be a focus
Yes, they will, yeah.
Okay, because you didn't ensure that.
We didn't ensure that.
Well, we didn't ensure that.
We didn't know we got included in that, and we.
Yes, you do. And also, if there's if there's secretaries or someone else in the central office that wants to meet to be on the classified group, we leave that up to you. Now, let me emphasize, I appreciate that question. We do not select the focus groups. We want you to select who you want to be represented on those focus groups, working with a point of contact. Let me just give you an example. The point of contact can contact every principal in your district and say, we need two teachers from each campus to be on this committee, focus group committee of teachers, and we would like to have them to be somewhat diverse, such as we don't want two kindergarten teachers, we want a kindergarten first or second and a fifth or sixth grade teacher, however however your campuses are designed. But we want it to be diverse in that respect. At the high school, we want extracurricular activities represented, real strong academic teachers represented, and then even if you have a a facilitator there or somebody of that nature, we want them. Athletic director could be in either group administrators or whichever group that they would fit into. But we want good diverse representation from all the different focus groups.
About how many per stakeholder group?
We would like to keep it under 15. In the student group, we like all grades represented at the high school level, two or three from each grade. And if you want to go a little bit more heavy with the ninth and 10th, because they're they're gonna be here when that new person arrives other than seniors, that's fine too. But that's your call. Okay, when we come back on the the Board of Education meeting, November the 5th, we'll review the stakeholder report. We will select interview questions, I say I will not select them, you will, but how we go about that is this. When you tell me what you're looking for in your new leader, we will develop criteria. Okay, we will take that criteria, or I will, and I will create a draft of questions aligned with that criteria, interview questions for your interviews when you interview the finalist. I will give you a bank of questions of probably 30, 35. Then you, as a board, will receive an email and a survey monkey link where you will go and prioritize your top two or three questions under each criteria. Then when you do that as a board, we will take that and take the highest priority of questions and create an interview packet of about 22 or 23 questions that we suggest you use in your interview. Now, that does not say that you can't add too. If there's a question you wanna add that's not on the survey monkey list that I provide for you, that's fine, you add your questions as well. But we want to facilitate a a meeting that focuses on the skills and the things that you are that you value and that are important to this district, so those questions are probing questions when you interview your finalist. So that's that's the reason we do the interview questions that way. We talk about interview procedures that day. The candidate, when he or she comes to you, will be with you all day long and evening, which means this, each one of these focus groups that we meet with on October the 1st will interview the candidates. They will have about an hour to hour and 10 minutes to interview that candidate, that that finalist. We will work with them in advance and help them create 12 or 13 questions that they're going to ask that candidate. Now, we will ask them to create questions or community that their focus group was craft questions, send them to me or my other consultant, then we will go through those questions, number one, make sure they're all legal, and if we need to wordsmith them a little bit, we'll do that, then we'll send them back and say, are these okay? If if so, then these are your 13 questions you're gonna use when you interview the finalist. Each one of those focus groups will have a chairperson. That chairperson will facilitate that focus group getting questions together, communicating with them, making sure they're there at their meeting time when the finalists are in, those type of things. So we will determine the interview procedure that day. We'll talk a little bit more about compensation. You made an adjustment in compensation, which I think is gonna be very beneficial in attracting some some more applicants. You you don't need to to underpay someone for the job that you're hiring them to do. And when I come back on November the 5th, I will meet with the chairpeople of each one of those focus groups and just refresh and review what's gonna happen when the finalists are interviewed. Now, one other thing about the interview procedures, and just as a refresher, when those finalists come in, we will have them show up somewhere, 8, 8:30, whatever, and then we will have these focus groups scheduled during the day. We typically have teachers after school because it's hard to gather 13 subs for the last period of the day or something, we know that. Then after they get through interviewing, uh being interviewed by these focus groups, if there's any spare time, they may visit a couple of campuses, this type thing. Then that evening, before you interview them, we ask that you just have an informal meal with them, and we get we ask them to invite their spouse or significant other if there is one. So you have an opportunity to meet the finalists and also their spouse. Then after you have an informal dinner meeting with them, then you will go into executive session and you will interview them using the questions you predetermined as your interview in your interview packet. So only time you'll be involved in the interviews is the evening. Everybody else will be involved all day long. Now, those focus groups, though, are gonna communicate with you what they gleaned from their meeting with that finalist on a sheet of paper, and they're gonna list for you the things that they liked, the positive things about that candidate, and what they feel like were their concerns. Each focus group will will debrief and create that one document, give all of their views, write that down, and you will have access to that after your interview that night when you interview those finalists. I'm guessing this from talking to a lot of people over the years, the things that you may sense from your interview will be very similar to what your focus groups will pick up of. You'll see a lot of correlation there, but that that will be beneficial to you as well. That's where the stakeholders are having input to you, but they're not gonna be the one that makes the decision. And then, December 3rd, board meeting. Well, by the way, I didn't put this on there, but right, November 6, that's when applications will close. Applications will close on November the 6th. That means we've got about two months, the application will be up probably by Friday. So we'll have about two months that that anyone that wants to can apply. That is plenty of time, we can take, that's a relaxed approach, which I think is good to have plenty of time to do that. December the 3rd, board meeting. After you finish your regular board meeting that evening, then I have already met with the stakeholder chairs, I or and a consultant will review the recommended finalists with you. And when I say recommended, I'll have a stack of all the people that apply. After vetting them, the other consultant and myself, after we vetted him and done extensive vetting of each one of them, and we feel like they have the skill set, the personality traits, those things that you're looking for that can work with you, we will make a recommendation of who you should look at. Now, that does not eliminate anyone else in the stack. You say, I want you to, why is he or she not there? We'll have a reason of why he or she is not there. If you want to still interview that person, that's your option. But we have a reason and a strong reason for every individual that we recommend you interview, and mainly it's because of past performance. You know, best way to predict future performance is past performance. Somebody doesn't change just to change their image and everything about their past just by saying they're gonna do it, it's it's what they've done in the past. Then you will select finalists that night, and the way you will select finalists is this, we will give you a reference summary of individuals we bring to you, usually a two-page summary of what we gleaned from talking with 13, 14 to 20 people, of all their previous work history, people that know them personally, professionally, this type thing. Then you will have a video of each one of those individuals, and they will respond to three questions, all of them will respond to the same three questions in 10 minutes or less. You will be in executive session and look at those videos. When you have the reference material, the video, then you will determine who you want to interview. We probably will bring you more individuals than you will interview. I I always say that three or four is the ideal number to interview. Sometimes I think three is best, but sometimes sometimes groups will interview four. If you start interviewing more than four, then you're gonna have this, it's it's just it's just not good, I don't think. But we may bring you four names, we may bring you five, we may bring you six, it just depends on how they how the applicants fall when when we start vetting them and their applications and all of that. Then after that, you will select your finalist, I will pass you your interview packets that we've created for you based on the questions you've already selected and so forth, and then I'll give you a daily schedule of what that finalist will be doing when they're here that day, all day long. And then I will finalize that interview schedule as soon as I leave here that night on December the 5th, uh December the 3rd, excuse me, then I will set up the interviews for the following days that you choose to interview. I recommend you interview between the 9th and 13th, that's a week, five nights there. You don't have to interview all five nights, you may pick two or three nights after you see your finalist, but we let the finalist know when the interviews are gonna be scheduled. If you want to move them up a little bit, you can, but that's just a week before, the 13th, I think, is probably a week before you get out for Christmas, give you plenty of time to interview and make your decision. What I recommend is this, after you after each interview, each night, you debrief, and you start in your mind ranking those people, first night you interview, the second, then the third, and so when you get down to the last interview, you've already got in your mind and you've debriefed as a board of the strengths and weaknesses of each one of those finalists you've interviewed to where you can make a decision relatively quick. The reason I don't mean you to make a hasty decision, but the sooner you make a decision and lay it to rest when you finish interviews, the better you are, because when you do not make that decision quickly, then you start having this. And sometimes it's just it's very difficult to keep things private, but that person that that you're going to select needs to know and be informed before the others know, and that's what we try to do. As soon as you make that decision, then we communicate personally with the others and let them know their status, and then then we set the interviews up, and you you're ready to hire somebody. So then after December 13th, you'd make a decision who you wanna hire, then we'll contact the others. When you get down to that point of of picking a candidate that you want to to hire, if you want us to assist in any way, or me, I will be glad to do that. And I've done that with lots of boards and talking with individuals and whatever whatever's needed, then we'll do that. Okay, now, let's go back to tonight. Let's talk about selection criteria. Now, here's what I would like you to think about in this. I want you to give me not lengthy paragraphs, but hopefully bullets, of skills, dispositions, characteristics that you think are essential for a person to be successful working in the Huntsville District as your superintendent. We will make a I'll make a list of all of these things, and then we'll look at how many of them fit together, how many of them are related, this type thing, you can probably come up with five or six criteria that have that communicate exactly what you're looking for, and that will become part of your application. When a person applies, they will connect themselves to the criteria that you have listed that you're you're seeking in this new leader. Then when we vet them, guess I guess how we're going to vet them? We're gonna talk to other people and see if they're doing what they said they've done in the past, and that's the way that we go through our through our reference work. So are you ready now to, and we're just gonna go down the one at a time, each one, 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 and we'll come back and start over, get it? Y'all ready for that? Okay, I will start with you, Ms. Whitney.
For mine, I have experience.
Okay, let's just take one at a time, okay? Now, when you say experience, are you talking about a superintendent?
Yes. Or at least assistant, you know.
Soup or assistant? Okay, now, does that have to be in Arkansas? Okay? Another one.
Communication.
Communication communication skills?
Yes. I kinda think I ought to excuse myself.
Okay. Okay, we're right ahead. Yes, sir.
I'd like a record of integrity.
By the way, I wanna share with you, I don't have spell check in this. If I make a mistake, it's because I didn't bring the right right mark, okay? I'm not a good speller, ever have been, ever will be.
I get that, me too.
Yes, sir, Mr. Steve.
Strong leadership and people skills.
Okay.
Mine's similar to that driven, like when they say they're gonna do it, do it kind of situation.
You're talking about then a person that is.
Yeah.
Follow-through, this type thing, right? Okay. I'm I may find a better word for it.
I know, I was sitting here, I was like, what is a good word for that, you know, motivated?
Sort of, I'm gonna put here, give or done.
There you go, that's what I'm getting at.
What you mean? Yes, sir.
I'm just like, build our compassion.
Very good. Start again with you, Ms. Whitney.
Good at building relationships, coaching staff, and being part of the community.
Okay.
Sir, financial skills.
Sir.
I think someone who listens well.
Okay. Knowledge of the community. Okay, now, if this is an outsider, they will not have the knowledge initially, but you're talking about a person that if they come from the outside, that they will become part of the community. Integrate into the community. Can I say that?
Yeah.
Integrate into the community. Okay.
My next one would be like open-minded, able to be presented with new ideas, not stuck in old rut.
Somewhat, can I say progressive there, but not from a political perspective?
Yes.
This is just like. I won't have you probably remember that either, about about being political. Yes, sir, Mr. Ellis.
That's a good explainer.
Okay. That goes back into our communication, doesn't it? Okay, 13th. Whitney, back to you.
Um, built working to create a cohesive district, since we've got, you know, St. Paul down there with what we're building.
You want unity, aren't you? Unity, okay.
I like that, I like that word, unity.
Okay. Sir.
Strategic planning. Well, someone's got a vision for the future.
Can we talk about strategic thinker?
Yes.
Okay. And if they are that, then they'll have the other things and they'll be able to put forth a plan, won't they? Yes, sir.
Um, just left, I had one in my head, I was going to say, um, um, come back to me.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. You just throw off, flip-flop. Go ahead.
No, that's how I'm like, I'm running out. I mean, we're hitting most of the ones that are wrong.
That's not unusual, that's not unusual, I assure you.
I would like to see someone with strong common sense.
I'm, pass.
Okay, you're sculling.
Come back, please.
Okay.
Yeah.
Transparency was the word I was.
Transparent.
Yes.
I'll take a point of privilege, let me tell you something. When I teach a finance class, I say this: If you're not willing to put up on the bulletin days, marquee on your district how you spend your money, then chances are you shouldn't be spending it.
That's great.
And that's, that's, that's important. Now, you're.
Say dedicated, wants to be here. I don't know, have we hit that one yet?
No.
Okay, yeah. Wants to be involved.
Okay, let me ask you this: Can, can I put beside that also ownership of the district?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Wear it with pride.
Persons that assume ownership, then they, they don't take a lot of pride, do they?
That's right.
Are you ready, do you pass again?
No, we're going with involvement with the, the school's activities.
Okay.
If they're willing.
That means you're, you're talking about supporting the extracurricular, aren't you?
Yes, they need to be seen.
You got all mine, but Ms. Timberg had put lives within thirty minutes of the district office, so, lives in the community.
Let me ask you this: Is your district boundary thirty, most of it thirty minutes from here?
Barring the red light sound.
Tell him, yeah.
You can get that word down there in St. Paul in thirty minutes, but you can't do it legally.
Let me ask you this: Can you say live in the district instead of thirty, thirty miles?
I would say yes.
Yeah.
I was just going off what she, her on there.
Think that'd be easier to. If that, if that becomes an issue, if that becomes an issue when you hire, that would be something that would be understood in your final interview.
Yes.
I mean, that would be predetermined upfront, but you, you would do assumptions. Any, but it's open, anything else?
I'd like to have somebody that has strong CTE skills or a background, um, just because of our community. I mean, we've, we've got a lot of, a lot of kids that are.
And we're talking about CTE in regards to academic CTEs.
Yes.
Now, there's one thing you've not, you've not made note of, which I think you value, and I don't mean to be putting words in your mouth, but you're talking about academics.
Yes.
And, and I think that you could place
That.
Academics with that and, and possibly. And I'm not telling you, I'm just.
I'd like for someone that, that comes from a school that has had a strong CTE program.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
Yep.
Understanding it and then supporting it and implementing it are two different things.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Did Connie have anything else?
Nope, nope, it's not. It pretty well, yeah, hits all of them.
Okay, here's what we, here's what we got, just to give you. Superintendent experience or assistant superintendent experience, communication skills, integrity, leadership and people skills, follow-through, get or done, compassion, relationships with staff and community, that goes back down to this ownership, uh, finance, listens well, integrates into the community, open-minded, uh,
Explainer.
Explainer, okay. Unity cohesion or cohesiveness, feels that, strategic thinker, common sense, transparency, uh, ownership of the district, supporting extracurricular activities, lives in the district and also CTE and academics. I think I can create five or six statements that will put the things that are, that are connected together, uh, and, and get that to you maybe by tomorrow afternoon, and what I'd like to do is if I get it to you, is let the other board members look at it and see if y'all approve it, and it'll be on the application hopefully by the end of the week. But there'll probably be five statements, could be six, but probably five criteria statements. Okay?
Do we want to put a years of experience up there? Two years is considered experience, but I'd rather see five or more.
As a superintendent or assistant superintendent?
Yes.
Are y'all?
I mean, that would be nice, but I just, I don't, I don't want that to roll out somebody that might be a good fit for the district.
Preferred five, how about that?
But not required.
Yeah, preferred five, but that gives you some lead when you're, you're following what you say you're doing. Okay? Good point. Anything else? District POC, is that individual here that, okay, I'll be meeting with this individual, and I assume that's okay with you as a board that this individual, and I don't know his name, Mr.?
Bailey Cotton.
Cotton?
Yeah.
I picked a lot of them. You, you may not know what I'm talking about, but.
Sam Brown Cotton's that.
Yeah.
I've, I've done that a lot.
And enjoyed doing it when I had to do it. I didn't have an option, but I enjoyed doing it. Okay, let's talk about advertising and media. People, when this, I've already got calls about this job, and what I tell them is I'm meeting with you tonight and so forth. This will go on our website, and when it goes on our website, it's nationwide instantly. We have thousands and thousands of hits a month. If we place this in the AAEA, and I'm assuming y'all are on the, where you can, you have to do that, I can't, we place that on there, I give you the, the information to place there, and then we put that also on ASBA, then you've got good advertisement. This idea, years ago, we'd use the, the Craig is that and those type of things, that doesn't, that's not going to cut it down with the, with the, uh, media, I mean, electronic age we got. You also could place it on your district website, contact McPherson-Jacobson, and, uh, this, you know, this type of thing, we can get that done, and all of that will create. Now, if you want to advertise more, we can, but, but that, none of those things I mentioned cost you anything.
I think those three would be.
And then once we, if we do put that on our website, we can make it to where they have to contact them, and we actually don't see anything as a district, right? Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I've identified the community, uh, groups, and then you know how you're going to communicate with us on who you want to invite to the meeting. I'm going to meet with Mr. Cotton in just a few minutes, and let's talk about getting things moving far as selecting focus groups. Now, he'll, he'll spend some time doing this the first three weeks or so, but after that, your job and pay will stop.
You, you pay me, right?
I thought you were Mr. Love. If it's not in the budget?
No. Oh, yeah, they broke it.
Okay, it's in the budget, okay, okay. Anything else of me? I'm, I'm ready to hit the road and start, start doing some work. I'm open for questions from you or even any, anyone out here. Any questions from anyone about what we're doing?
I think you're going to be pretty good.
I'll have another consultant working with me, so, I don't know who that'll be yet, but I will have someone with me. The only glitch, and this not be a glitch, but the only thing that may happen in this process is I'm, I'm, I'm due for a hip transplant, and I don't know when that's going to happen, but if it does, and I can't come up, then I can zoom, maybe zoom with you.
I think the fifteen-minute, you know, that's no sense of your job.
Well, y'all have a good foundation, I think, and understanding about what's going to take place. I've tried to make sure that you, it's not, you know what's the next steps are going to be. Your work is done as a board until we get down to that December the fifth meeting, you select your finalist, and that week, we have three or four nights that you're going to be interviewing for two to three hours that night. That's the most time you'll spend. The rest of it is all up to Mr. Cotton and me and getting things done, and that's doing our work.
So who's our point of contact, and this is due tomorrow?
Uh, I'd like for you to get to Mr. Cotton tomorrow.
Okay.
Now, if you want to do that electronically,
Absolutely.
Then, then I think he would be willing to accept that, where you don't have to write it if you want to, or if you don't, you don't feel like that's the best way to do it, then you do it.
I'm pretty technically challenged.
Okay, then you do it the other way.
I want to watch you get on that Survey Monkey. I was just thinking that earlier.
Probably better wear earplugs.
It really, it's free, it's easy. It really is easy the way we do.
I'm good checking my school emails. I'm be also, I am technically challenged.
But if you, if you could check your email, you could do Survey Monkey, I sure would. I really do.
You don't have to sign in to view it.
I, I did, I overlooked one thing, and this is really important, it just came, got, came to me. When we come in on October the first and, and have our focus group meetings, we're going to also set up an online survey, and, and anyone in the district can respond to that survey. Now, my question is, does it need to be in more than English? Does it need to be in Spanish?
Is this community or staff?
This is the whole district. Anybody in the district?
Yes, somebody in there.
Marshallese and Spanish.
Yes.
He means parents.
Marshallese, Spanish, and English at least.
Okay.
We have one more that's.
We have several more.
Yeah.
But I'd have to get with Ms. Cozak, get all the languages.
Okay.
Could we get a copy ahead of time, and we could translate it, or you'll translate?
Well, uh, marshallese is something we very rarely ever come across, but most of that's in Arkansas.
Will you clarify that? Do you mean the parents or the students?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody, even any of your staff members that, that are not on the focus groups can respond on that, on that. The only thing that we redact is this: Personal reference to an individual, such as a teacher or an individual, whatever it might be, and foul language. We leave it spelling it as, as it is, capitalization as it is, slang as it is, but we'll redact those two things before we send it back to you. You'll get a copy of all of that, all those responses, you'll get a copy of, as a board. But we will do at least those three languages, and then I will, I'll work with you on how we're going to get someone locally maybe to do the marshallese part of it. Good question. Anything else?
And I guess asking if people have their addresses, those, looking what we ask.
It'd save Mr. Cotton a lot of time, and it'd be overtime if we, if we ask him to do that.
So I.
I don't get it over with.
And I think, I mean, it's kind of a, you know, we're going to ask, you know, the mayor, sheriff, SRO.
Oh, yeah.
And county judge.
Place chief.
All those folks like that are good.
Newspaper.
Ministers, people that have contact and communicate with a lot of people are good if we can get them at that meeting.
So, we can make our list, Bailey knows those people, and so make your list without those on there, that way we can write more people, power letters.
People we.
Is that okay with you, Bailey, that you kind of?
We feel like that we really could enhance the credibility of the board in this community meeting if we get some people back. Because now, I work for you, and I'm going to represent you well, but I'm also going to be able to, to work with these people and let them know what your challenge is, what you're willing to accomplish, you welcome their input. That's my goal. That's my goal. Anything else? I think I've covered everything that I wanted to cover. Appreciate, appreciate you all, and Whitney now be communicating here hopefully by tomorrow afternoon, and she'll have something to use that you can look at, and you get back to her, then we'll get to the home office.
Who's going to do your hip surgery?
Uh, Dr. Moore, was born in Hefney in Little Rock. He just did a knee for me about nine months ago.
I had a hip in twenty-twelve and a knee last year, so I just want to hand me over a family of mine.
Talk to you afterwards. We don't need to have that in minutes. But I'm interested in putting that hip, I've, I know what the knee's like, I'm interested in that hip. My wife had me doing a job that caused it, that I blamed her two months ago. Well, that's all that I have, except I'm going to get Mr. Cotton.
I don't want to give this back to you.
I don't know. You can email it, or you can text it to me.
All right. I have to straighten my arm back over here for this.
You're going to get a picture. That's fine.
It'll be, it'll be somewhere, I'll let you know.
Just while we are finished, we had a good game.
John ain't going. We got a good meeting.
Okay.
Good, all right.
They were prepared, and just expedite it.
I have one good thing that's, that is something else, but Ratt Futures, Ms. Jennifer Eaton has T-shirts, um, for sale to help fund that program and to raise awareness, um, um, forty-two, what is the say? Something forty-two.
Uh.
Basically, we're going to wear them once a month, wear our T-shirts once a month, um, this month's the twenty-fourth.
Fourth Tuesday.
Um, so, what's the?
Fourth Tuesday.
Fourth Tuesday, it's been forty-fourth. Um, we've already helped, I know four fingers, what she said in her last update, through this program.
Yep. She's done a great job so far, just getting funding and getting the things that we need for the program, and, uh, she's taken it her own brand with it, so, yeah.
And, and the futures, we've got our Eagles and our Saints on there.
Love it. Yeah. My forty-two.
My forty-two.
For our children to ensure Ratt Futures.
Yes, thank you.
For our children to ensure.
Sorry, I, I didn't have, I was just reading her.
Motion to close. Second all favor.
Thank you all. Good to see you.